[S01]I'm going to start the recording. I'm going to take a moment to make sure that my audio is fine. Okay, there we go. Now, let me know if you have any questions.
Thanks for your time. Bye.
Okay, green is on, right?
Yep.
One second, let me turn this on. Okay, we are recording. Okay, we're at 7:01 PM. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to welcome each and every one of you here to the Town of Winchester Zoning Board of Appeals regular meeting for June 24th of 2025, held here at the Winchester Town Hall, 338 Main Street, Winston, Connecticut, and the P. Francis Hicks Room. Okay, present tonight with myself, Aubrey English, our board members, John Pollack, Ryan Horvey, and Ellie Gunn. Okay, absent or alternate is a member, Paul Mitchell, and alternate member, Mary Ann Marino. So, for those who have not been before our board before, just in a nutshell, the way these meetings work is that we call your application up in front, have you come in front of us, you explain your project, the board will have an opportunity to ask the applicant questions, and after all questions have been asked at that time, I will open up the hearing to members of the public if they have any comments, concerns, or questions that they would have to the applicant. And for parliamentary procedures, I would just ask that any questions, comments, that any person from the public, anyone else would have, would be directed to the chair, and I would make sure that would be distributed out to who needs to be, who would need to be, the question to go to as well, too. Now, unlike most, oh, okay, I'll get to that in a second. Once the public hearing is done, we will give the applicant the opportunity for a final few thoughts for their application or to the board. At that time, a motion will be read into the record, and we will then continue discussion on the, on your project. At that time, we will vote on your project, and you will get an answer, yes or no, about having your project tonight. Now, that being said- Now, that being said, okay, we're, unlike most other boards where unanimous, where just majority vote would be, to have your project confirmed by this board, the zoning board of appeals, requires a four-vote affirmative. You have to have four affirmative votes. So if we say had five full, or five full members here, and, you know, three of them was in favor of your project, and two of them were not, you would still not get your, not, your project would still not pass due to that rule. It's just been a rule that's been in place here. Now, with all that also being said, as you can see, as applicants can see tonight, we only have four people, four board members present tonight, which constitutes a quorum to conduct a meeting. The problem is, well, the issue would run into, you would have to have every single one of us sitting at this dais, the four of us, to vote in favor of that. Now, with that being said, when that, when the situation like that happens, we give the applicant an opportunity to, if you want to continue your application to our next meeting, so we would have more, a full five, five-person board present, so you may have an opportunity to maybe have, maybe just lose one vote, or so, or you have that option. Or you can, you can opt to proceed as, as planned, and we would just, you just have to have each of us on the, on this board vote in favor of your project. So again, with each application that's come before tonight, I will give, I will start off by giving you the opportunity to decide whether, A, you want to go forward, or B, you want to continue to the next meeting due to the minimum amount of board members present. So I mean, hopefully, if everyone understands it, if they have any questions, I, you know, for what I said, or hopefully I explained myself, okay? Okay, so, all that being said, I will call first, ZBA application number 25-6, a variance for 734 Lake Drive, and I believe our applicant and representative are present, and if you would please just identify yourselves for the record.
Would you mind turning that mic on?
Oh, yes, please, thank you very much.
For the record, my name is Robert Colabella, I am a senior project manager with Haley Ward, and I'd also like to introduce a new employee at our company, this is Jason Craven, he's also a senior project manager at Haley Ward, and just wanted to bring him to a meeting to show him how we do business.
Mr. Craven, nice to meet you, and welcome to our meeting here.
Good to be here, thank you.
Have an idea of basically kind of what we do here as well, too. I don't know if you've been to any other town meetings with, you like?
It's from Ohio.
They do things differently down in Ohio.
Do I?
I'm from Ohio, and they do things a little bit differently.
Well, I know, I mean, it also depends on which part of Ohio, you get all sorts of, all sorts of different areas of Ohio, from the Great Lakes down to like Appalachia there, so, so welcome. So, first thing, first thing, first thing I ask is, Shane, do all our notices, everything?
Yes.
For this project here?
Legal notices and all the butters have been noticed.
Thank you so much, yeah. Okay, Mr. Colabella, with what I just said earlier, just having a four-member board present, would you like to continue now, or would you like to continue on the next meeting?
I'd like to continue.
For this evening?
Yeah.
Okay, that'd be fine, just wanted to give you that option. Go ahead.
Okay, as I mentioned, for the record, my name is Robert Colabella, I'm a senior project manager at Haley Ward, I'm here today representing the applicants, which are Richard and Carmel Nardella. Their application is for, mostly for yard setbacks, for, it's not a complete removal and replacement, what they're doing with the existing house is removing the second story and rebuilding it in the same footprint, rebuilding the whole second level of the house. And they're taking their garage, they're getting rid of the shed that's up in the front of the yard, and moving the garage from, back from so close to the road, back to the house. So, if you look at your site plan, or to sheet three, I'm sorry, two. So, right now, in the front yard, you'll see in the red, there's the existing garage, and about less than two feet off the property line, there's the shed.
Wait, we need to get, wait, you want which one?
Oh, sheet two.
Sheet two.
It's on the bottom corner.
Bottom corner?
Bottom right corner.
Right underneath, it's the one you're holding, yeah, that one right there.
The bigger one?
Yeah, with the green.
All right, I didn't see anything in the red.
See the boxes in red in front of the green?
Yeah, I got it both under there here.
Yeah, see in front of it, see the red lines?
Right.
I see it now, thank you.
Okay, wait, wait for Aubrey to get it.
Is it on this one here?
Yeah. It's on the large sheet, sheet two, first page is existing conditions.
Okay.
So, the front yard has a shed that's about less than two feet off the left side yard or west side yard, and then there is an existing garage in front of the house that is, I think it's, let's, the only, existing is, it's only 10.61 feet off the road. So what the applicant wants to do is, and his biggest problem is that garage and that shed, he wants to move the garage further away from the road, so he's not backing out into the road blindly, and move the garage back to the house and eliminate the shed completely. So, to that end, it creates, it takes the existing non-conforming and makes all of them less non-conforming, and I'll explain that to you right now. So, the existing right side yard, that's the side yard that's got the most ruin, the existing right side yard, the existing setback to the garage is 23.37 feet, the proposed setback to the new garage is 26.15 feet, we'll be asking for a variance of 8.85 feet on the right side. On the left side, which is the short side over where the shed is, its existing side yard setback is 1.79 feet to the shed, and we're eliminating the shed, and the garage is now 5.31 feet from the side yard, and they'll be looking for a variance of 29.69 feet on the left side or the east side. And then, the front yard, which is the most complicated of them all, is 10.61 feet existing, and it's going to be moved back to 39.63 feet, and the variance they'll be looking for there is 10.37 feet. And then if we go to sheet three, I'll discuss some impervious coverage, and show you how we're reducing that. So the table is color coded for us, so it'll make it a little bit easier for us to look at, existing is up, up top, and proposed is below. So, they're going from, the blue that you see on this drawing is all asphalt, in both the existing and the proposed situation. The tan that you see, including the garage and the shed and the old existing building, there, that's just garages and sheds, and that's the brown that you see, the green you see is existing and proposed sidewalks and patios. So, one of the things that this project does that's really good, I believe, is, one, it decreases the impervious coverage from 48.5% to 43%, so we're gaining an extra 5.5% of impervious coverage on this project as well. So, in all instances, the left side yard, the right side yard, the front yard, and the impervious cover, the things we're asking for variances for, are going from a non-conforming situation to a less non-conforming situation. And the applicant understands that by making it a less non-conforming application, he can never go back the other way, per our regulations. So he can't, like, for instance, he's got a 42, he's down to 43% impervious coverage, if he decides to do something in the future and decrease that impervious coverage, he can come to the board and ask for that permission. But if he, he cannot go over the, he can't go back to 48.5%, he's not allowed to, nor can he go back in any of the yards that we're asking for variance for, because once again, it'll be in the deed and it'll be in perpetuity, because that's what variance is on, right? So, and one of the good things I liked about this project, because I'm always trying to protect the lake, is in, on sheet three, in the upper-left corner of the property, there's catch basin, which is currently sitting in the middle of that asphalt. So water is coming off the asphalt oils and sands and stuff, and they're going in to that basin. But in the new, in the proposed situation, it's going to be in the grass off of the asphalt. So it's no longer, that catch basin is no longer going to be, it's going to have filtering before any water gets to it, so it's going to make things a lot cleaner than it was before the owner decided to implement this project. So, that being said, I wanted to get into my attachment A, so I'll read it for the record. Okay, you all have that in your packet. One of the other things, too, you have in your packet, one of the other things you have in your packet are letters from each neighbor on both sides of the property that endorsed the project. So I put that in the packet, it was submitted with the application, and you should all have it packaged. So, attachment A reads that, "Dear members of the zoning board of appeals, Haley Ward represents Mr. and Mrs. Nardella, the only..." You might want to be looking at sheet three while I talk about this. Haley Ward represents Mr. and Mrs. Nardella, the only property known as 734 Lake Drive in Winston, the property is shown as improvement location, survey prepared by Richard Nardella at 734 Lake Drive in Winston, Connecticut, prepared by Timothy G. Wiley, so that's who our surveyor was. The property is in the HL district, the minimum lot area in the district is 40,000 square feet, the minimum lot width is 150 feet, front yard setback is 50 feet, minimum side and rear yard setbacks are 35 feet. There is also a minimum setback for decks, patios, and pergolas, which are attached to the primary residence of 20 feet. His deck or his patio back there is going to be beyond that 20-foot mark, so he's, he's conforming there. Okay, so the Nardella lot is 14,220 square feet, has a lot width of 54.1 feet at the street line, and 69.4 feet at the setback. The existing right and left side yard setbacks are 23.37 and 1.79 feet respectively, the existing front yard setback is 10.61 feet, and the existing rear yard setback is 36.7 feet. The existing impervious coverage is 48.5%, therefore the existing lot and structures are all non-conforming. So the Nardella's proposed project decreases or matches all non-conformities as follows. Front yard is going from 10.61 feet to 39.62 feet, the left side yard's going from 1.79 feet to 5.31, the right side yard is going from 23.37 to 26.15 feet, and the rear yard staying the same, because he isn't doing any work back there, except taking up the second floor of the structure and building it straight up in the same footprint. The height of the structure, when it's completed, will be 27 foot nine inches, which is below the 30-foot threshold for the lake, it's a 35 feet, so. Okay, Mr. and Miss, now this is where I'm going to start talking about the hardship and why we're here today. Mr. and Mrs. Nardella's property is unique to most properties in the HL district, because the roadway in front of the house is not town-owned, and the wearing surface of the road is not located within the right-of-way. So if you look at sheet three, you can see the edges of pavement are not within the right-of-way for that road, they are actually on the lot across the street, so, and if you need me to force that out, this is on the left sheet two, this is the site plan. Sorry, knocked it up, you think. So, this is the edge of pavement, and this is the edge of pavement, and it's actually, the edge of pavement is this line and this line over here. So this is the property line across the street, so part of the road is on that property. So, same thing here, just in case, this is, that line right there is edge, edge of pavement, that's the property line, so this asphalt is on there, it's not within the right-of-way.
So the 10, you said it was 10, 10 and a half feet to the, to the edge of the asphalt?
Excuse me?
What's, from, from where the existing garage is now, to the, to where the?
To the property line, your setbacks are all related to property lines.
Right.
Right, so the existing one is right here, 10.61 feet to the corner.
What I'm asking is, how far is that to the asphalt? Because in your description here, part of the, part of the hardship is backing into something blindly, but how far away from?
It's in there, I'll maybe get to it in a minute.
Okay, okay.
If the wearing surface of the roadway were to be repositioned from private property and placed in the right-of-way where it should be, the right-of-way, the Nardella's garage would be less than 13.9 feet from the edge of the pavement, the average length of his pickup truck is 19 to 21 feet, and the average length of the passenger car is about 14.7. So, the proposed condition puts him out into the pavement. Now, at any time, the owners may say, I don't want the liability of having that asphalt on my property, move that thing into the right-of-way. If he moves that into the right-of-way, he's going to be even closer to the, to the asphalt at that point. So, they can do that at any time, and this makes his property unique in this situation, and it, and it isn't anything that he self-created, which we know as variance, you can't self-create your own.
Can I ask a question about the right-of-way? As a property owner on that right-of-way, doesn't he have some ownership of that right-of-way?
They all, but, but anybody could, well, he could get outvoted by everybody and move the property over, right? So at any point, that could happen to him, or anybody in the future in perpetuity, which would leave it, I mean, it's not only an issue for him backing out, it's an issue for people who are coming up and down the road, if he's only, if he's backing out or even pulling out forward, and the, you know, the rear of his vehicle is out into the asphalt before a car can get, he doesn't see them coming, there's a fence on the right, there's bushes on the left, there's, the guy next to him has a garage really up close to the, to the road.
Right.
So, and, and the road does curve away, left isn't as bad as right, looking to the right, and he's going to be in a bad situation if that roadway ever gets put to where it's supposed to be, and, you know.
Who did the, that was done, that was paved a couple of years ago, right? By all the people that lived there, is that correct, or you don't know?
I don't, that, that road's quite a bit older than two years.
I mean, they, they put a new paving on it, a new surface on it, it's been done, it's, it's like brand new.
It's a little bit older than, it's more than two years old, I know that, but.
Doesn't he have a property across the street where he could put a garage in? Because I go for a walk around the lake, drive my bicycle around, and I never hardly ever see any traffic there, and I don't even think Bob, is it Bob or is it Mr. Nardella?
Rich.
Rich, Rich never even lives there in the wintertime, and I, I really don't see how anybody could even back into him, it's, you go so slow on that road, you can't speed on it, it's.
No, I, I know you can't speed on it, but he can back into somebody pulling out, because he can't see them, because his truck is in the road before his eyes hit the road.
What's up, Mr. Colabella, finish your presentation, we can have fresh questions in terms.
Okay, got it.
Sorry.
No, you're, no, you're good, you're good.
During our permit determination process with Jeffrey Green, zoning enforcement officer, and Jerry, Jeremy DeCarlo, interim town planner, it was determined that a variance would be required for the placement of the garage. It was further suggested that we review the case of Adelson versus the zoning board of appeals of Fairfield, which was decided in Connecticut Supreme Court on December 5th, 1988. The case involved Fairfield's ZBA's approval of a less non-conforming use than the previous use in that district slash zone, and other non-conformities that were being improved upon. The summation of this case was that the ZBA did have the right to approve the variance in absence of a documented hardship if all improvements were less non-conforming than the existing non-conformity, that's been on the record since 1988, and it's still there today. This would not apply to new construction or conforming lots, which, this is not new construction, it's not a conforming lot, and structures that meet or exceed zoning regulations put in consideration of non-conforming lots and structures that are being improved to be less non-conforming. So the Nardella's proposed improvements result in the decrease of the existing non-conformities, all of the existing non-conformities is being decreased. All of the existing non-conformities is being decreased. The improvements to the property will result in a much less non-conforming lot and structure that would be in character with the surrounding houses and with our plant, our plan of conservation development. No increase to existing non-conformities are proposed. In this instance, it's the same situation, so he has these two things happening here. He has, one is the situation with the garage, he was wanting to put it back to the house. Now, if that garage was attached to the house, which it is, um, we would be here for special exception. Because the existing garage is detached from the house, we need the variance to move that garage back to that location. And in doing so, all of the variance that we require are less non-conforming than the existing non-conformity. And per Adelson's case versus the town of Fairfield, the same rules apply here that applied in that case. Whereas, all of the non-conformities that are existing on this lot are going to be less non-conforming. The improvements to the lot are, are, are much better than what is there now. Uh, and especially that, the storm sort of thing. So, moving the garage across the street is not possible because that's where his well is located. And you have separation distance from the well, and no matter where he would put that garage across the street on that property, he could not, the well has been there since he bought the property. It was there before he bought the property and it's there. So he could not move the garage across the street because that's where his well is. And can't move the well onto the other side of the street because no matter where he puts it on the lot because of the size of the lot, it'll be within the radius of the grinder pump and we don't want, which, which the health district would not approve of that if we moved the well across the street and had it too close to the grinder pump. So, we did look at moving the garage across the street. It didn't work because of the well. And then, we looked at different locations on the property to put it. And we determined that this was the best location because there's two things. We would've centered it a little bit, but we wanted to keep it away from that catch basin. So we kept it to that side as much as we could. It's not really further in the side yard than the existing building, but it is within the setback. So we need the variance to move the garage to that location. To that, I, I mean, other than the neighbors' letters which you have in your packets, if you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Could you tell me please, what is the square footage of the house that he lives in now? Including the first floor, the second floor, and the basement, if he has anything in the basement?
No basement.
No basement, no, he's built on the pads?
It's all slab concrete, yes, very hard rock. The buildings and structures are gonna go from existing at two thousand one hundred and nineteen square feet to two thousand eight hundred and forty-one square feet.
So that's roughly, let's ballpark it at eight hundred or nine hundred square feet, right?
It's uh, seven hundred and twenty square feet.
So, the size of the house will increase by at least that, so it's, it's going to be a bigger house. We're gonna be giving up pavement and stuff.
The garage, the house itself isn't gonna be...
I, I thought it was mentioned that the second floor of the house was gonna be torn down or something was going to...
Yeah, and it's being built sa- in the same, he's building it in the same building.
Gaining, gaining square footage looks like over the garage. So by attaching the garage, that's, that gain is gonna be up top. It looks like this, but this is...
Yeah, it's, it's...
So what is, what is getting bigger? The garage is getting bigger or the house is getting bigger or both of them are getting bigger?
Um, well, the garage is getting, it, the garage is bigger than the garage in Shetland. It's gonna move back to that location.
Yes, right.
Yes.
Okay, so my question was, how big is the garage going to be now versus what the garage was as it stands now? And is there going to be a floor on that or anything like that, or is it just...
What was that last one?
Is there gonna be a floor, like a second floor on the garage or something like that, or stuff like that?
I have, I have the drawings.
I saw from the drawings, they're very, they're very uh undetailed to say the least.
There's uh, one of, two, two of them. So you're looking at that one?
Yeah, because sometimes when people do come in here, I've seen much better drawings than, and these look like they're um...
The house drawings are a little hard to see, but...
They're hard to visualize, so...
Well, that terrinelli is old school and does everything with a...
I know, yes, I can see that.
Does everything uh with a pencil.
Right.
That's why I was hoping we had the monitors today because there are, there are other drawings in here. So this is the, this is the garage.
Right, yeah. But what I'm trying to find out is how big this is going to look. I, I see it on the paper here and you don't really see um...
There's dimensions on there.
There's, there's a view I just saw. Thirty-six by thirty-two.
There it is, right here.
Second, second, second sheet, four?
Yeah.
Okay, thirty-six by thirty-two. And is that a two-car garage or, or we don't?
It's a three-bay garage.
Three-bay garage, I, I didn't think we were allowed to have three-bay garages, but that doesn't make a difference, I guess. Is, is there a reason why, why this project has to be so big?
Because he is relocating here, and the reason he's doing this is because he's bringing all his stuff with him and he doesn't have room to park the cars and he doesn't wanna park them on the grass over the catch basins anywhere else, so, uh, and I'm assuming he'll be bringing his boat, but I'm assuming he'll park that across the street.
Because the, the thing that bothers me a little bit is, I, I still don't see the hardship here. Even though you read it over, I, I, I don't agree with it. And the other thing is, um, this is, looks like it's going to be a very big house when he gets done with it. And we don't really need very big houses anymore on the lake. If you look at the water falling and stuff like that, how the weeds are coming up this year, it's, it's pretty sad. If we keep building like this, somebody down the street's gonna have the same old idea. Let's tear down a part of the house, make it a little bit bigger, and uh let's pick up some patio blocks and reduce the impervious surface and pervious surface, just twist those numbers around and then uh we'll get it past the zoning board.
I am always, when I design anything around the lake, I always make it as least conforming as I possibly can. And I've done it in this instance as well.
But this is just a, a pretty big-sized house I see here. And it's just, once again, this house, we listen right now.
Well, if you look at your, your sheets, sheet three of Mike's, uh, sheet two of Mike's plan? You can see the house in red superimposed over the house.
We don't have that rest sheet every...
Yeah, it's hard to see it. Of our site plan, huh?
This one's to the red line.
Oh, okay, that's the red lines there?
Yeah, so that's the original house, following the same exact line.
Yep.
And then this is the bump out, this is gone. And then this is where the garage takes over for this area.
So the only, the only increase he had on this whole, this is with a rectangle right here. This is all conforming, he's just bumping out the kitchen a little bit. And that's the only increase he, he's having from the house. And the difference in between this and this taking up all this space and then move back to here, he hasn't increased it by that much at all. I mean, like I say, this rectangle right here, so this is the existing footprint of the house. So all of the houses, all of that, that control is coming up. He needed this, the architect said he needed this space to make a corner here with a duct or something here. Um, this is all conforming, this little bump out because it meets all the outside, it's in that triangle, which is what's left. So, really, the increase in the house is, is only about two foot sixteen square feet. It, it really isn't increasing the size of that house by much. And the garage increase is less than twenty percent.
Do you have any questions from the board?
So the three inches there, it's a catch basin, as if there's two, right? There's one in the, in the road, and then there's one in the driveway. Is there anything for, so you had mentioned the second one will be in the grass, which is...
Yeah, he's got, touching those storms, so I'm sorry.
So it stayed, it maintains those...
Yeah, Jim wouldn't...
So this doesn't change anything other than the location, being in the grass?
We're not even changing the location, it's staying there.
It's just getting the asphalt.
The asphalt that's around it extending whatever can come off of asphalt into that two thousand feet.
Any other questions? Okay, there's none at the moment. Um, I will open the hearing to any members of the public who wish to speak in, uh, as to this application. Do we have any members present, the public present here who wish to speak to this application? Any members of the public who wish to speak to this application? Any members of the public who wish to speak to this application? Hearing none. Um, I will, uh, we read into the record very briefly the two following letters from, uh, the neighbors. Um, the first one is, states, "Hello, ZVA members. I have reviewed the improvements to Richard and Carmel Nardella's property at 734 Lake Drive and take no exception respectfully," and I hope I'm pronouncing it all right, Elizabeth Sinott?
Sinott.
Sinott, thank you. Uh, 736 Lake Drive, Winston, Connecticut, zero six zero nine eight. Uh, second letter, "Hello, ZVA members. I've reviewed the improvements to Richard and Carmel Nardella's property at 734 Lake Drive and take no exception respectfully," is it?
It's attorney John Flaherty.
So, I'm sorry?
John Flaherty.
John Flaherty, because I'm, I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing an Odell or something.
Oh, no, I'm on six oh two, I, I'm doing four this week. Sorry, I'm, I'm on East Wakeville Boulevard right now.
I wanna take a look and see which one we're talking about, the same person.
Yeah, it's Odell.
Odell.
Odell. Now, what's the first name, you know? Is it Kira or Cairo or Ken?
Kyle?
Kyle, okay. And if the, these neighbors are listening and I'm botching their names, please accept my apologies. Okay. Uh, address 732 Lake Drive, Winston, Connecticut. Um, those being read into the record as public, as comments as far as a public hearing. I'm gonna have, do we have one more? Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to this application? Hearing none, I will close the pub... I'm closing the public forum.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, I thought you were closing the public hearing, I thought you were gonna say public hearing, sorry.
I'm closing the public comments, it's okay. So, at this time, I'll close public comments to this application. And Mr. Colabel, I'd be happy to give you the last word.
All right, so I understand John's apprehension. However, in this case, there is true hardship with those, and, and the fact that the road does get moved in the future, and it has advanced, there, there is a site distance issue there. That's something that's unique to the property that he did not create. It was there when he bought the property and it's still there and they made no other changes to the property. They keep this property exceptionally well, exceptionally well. And um, the Adelson case allows the zoning board of appeals to approve a, a variance for application. This came from Jeremy DeCarly, which is current town planner. The ability to prove, approve the application if the application decreases all non-conformities that you're asking for a variance for. And in this case, and it does that, you could do, and it allows the ZVA to do that without a documented hardship. And that's what the case was all about, and you read about it anytime you want. I was, Jeremy made me aware of it and we, um, read through the, the case and this is exactly the summary of the case, that as long as you're making all of the non-conformities less non-conforming, the ZVA board of the town of Fairfield was able to approve that hardship without a documented, approved that variance without a documented hardship. It went all the way to the state supreme court in nineteen eighty-eight and the case still stands. So, we do have a documented hardship. We also are asking for variance under both the documented hardship and the Adelson versus town of Fairfield conclusions in the September, nineteen, December of nineteen eighty-eight, uh, supreme court ruling. So, everything he's doing here is making it less non-conforming. And the one thing I did wanna show you is, oh, I don't have the screen. I really tied my arms without having the screen and I, I wanted to show you, um, truthfully, exactly how clean and neat the Nardellas keep their property. And one of the better things that we see here that Mary Ann likes to talk about, and I'll, I'll go back for a second. So...
Yeah, I'm very familiar with the profile.
I just wanted to show you the...
Okay, why don't you see, yes. Could be, because they, they look at it when, when micros are supposed to.
So the, Jeff, I'm familiar with the rock, so I took... So at the road, I, what I wanna show you is over here at the front, at, so over here at, at the wall where Mary Ann always talks about, and I, I agree with that, because I, and I like it. But what he did, he has, it's six feet wide. It is also, um, about eight feet deep and it is filled with filter fabric around the whole thing and filled with crushed stone. So, the roof leaders are gonna be going into that. And one, I even have a calculation, uh, on drawings that show that it can handle the full one point three inches of water coming off of the roof that is required. So, to that end, you know, I was, now I don't know if, when it goes to public hearing or if we should keep it open and wait for five. But, I don't know, I think the Nardellas have a, a project here that really is, the building's not getting any taller. It's only got like sixteen square feet of additional built house space. The garage is gonna be much better served by moving it back, attaching it to the building. Only reason it's a little bit bigger because he has, gonna be moving here and he's bringing all his vehicles with him. Right now, they, the whole front is like covered with asphalt and they come in and they park behind that other garage. So, all of this will clean up the property nicely, give us, you know, a little less impervious coverage on a lot that's really at like forty-eight and a half percent, you know? So, just reducing it five and a half percent is a big help. And additionally, moving it away from that catch basin. So, we're hoping to stand on all of the non-conformities being less non-conforming, which would not require you to approve this. require you to approve this, in the app, would allow you to approve this in the absence of a documented hardship, although we have presented a documented hardship here today. So, with that, I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Colubella. I will go ahead and close the hearing of this application, and read the following motion into the record. Motion to grant variances per section three D five C of the zoning regulations for application ZBA number twenty-five dash six. Remove the existing garage and shed, build garage in new location, west side yard setback twenty-nine point six nine inches, south side yard setback eight point eight five inches, and a twenty, twenty inches or feet?
Right here?
Am I reading this right, feet or inches?
What, the west side yard?
Feet, I'm sorry, I just want to make sure I'm saying. West side yard setback twenty-nine point six nine feet, south side yard setback eight point eight five feet, and a twenty-eight, correction, front yard setback ten point three seven feet, and a twenty-eight percent increase in impervious coverage. At seven thirty-four Lake Drive, Winston, Connecticut. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded, discussion amongst the board members. Okay, while we have discussion, I mean-
You look like you want to say something.
I did, well, because I was asking about the right of way in the road, and that being the hardship portion of this thing, but then, coming back and saying what Fairfield did kind of negates that.
Well, it doesn't really negate it, I still want to implore you that the hardship exists, but it allows you to approve it without the hardship. Without a documented hardship, but I am documenting the one hardship that he has, and the reason he's moving that garage from point A to point B. Especially if he's backing out with his, with a nineteen-foot truck thirteen feet off the asphalt, you know, so, you don't even get out of the garage, and the rear of the truck is in it, would be in there.
No, I understand that, I was just confirming that whole dialogue, that's all.
Ryan, did you have something?
Well, I was just looking at the existing versus proposed, right? In the, to John's point about the structure size, we're still making everything less non-conforming with approving it, so if we, you know, and I, whether asphalt into the catch basin is worse than gutter leaders into a stone basin, you know, I'm kind of leaning towards the, you know, going to that forty-three percent versus a forty-eight and a half without being able to capture the water better, I think it's a better impact. Just, I'm going through the whole thing in my head, right, like it's-
It's cleaner.
It's cleaner, without the asphalt.
And the water that the stone, there's a calculation on sheet three, I believe it is. So what I did for calculating that area, I took the amount of stone that is there, and I took out the level of the lake, and I, what was left was how much stone was above the lake, and how much water it can receive, the voids can receive. Got the math from what the void ratio is for that sized stone, which is a very uniform-sized stone by the way. And it handles more than the one point three inches of rainfall, the first one point three inches of rainfall from the roof, it's a really good system that he has down there. Not only can the water not get past the first barrier, which is a stone barrier, a stone, cobblestone barrier, you don't have to go up and over that, and then get into that stone and fill those voids before it starts dropping down into the water, and it's recharging the water, it's not sending water directly into the lake. And even if it, just per se, and it can't happen, but just per se, all that stone was to get filled with silt or something, but there's no silt's coming off the ground. So, if all that stone was to get filled with silt or something, it still has to make it over the capstones, which is another jump for the water, so there's no way the water is not gonna get reached, it's gonna get discharged and recharged before it goes into the lake, without bringing any deleterious matter with it.
And I'm gonna throw this out there, too, as far as the hardship. Not dismissing anything that, you know, your concerns as well, John, or anyone else's concerns either, but, you know, and I can understand if the fact there's very little traffic on, on, well, it's Lake Drive there, too.
I'm worried about pedestrian traffic.
Well, this is, this is, this is where, this is what I'm getting, this is what I'm getting at. It can, it does concern me that the fact that a vehicle can stretch out into the roadway, and even if there's not that much vehicle traffic, it takes one to have any type of incident that, you know, could, could impact, you know, the property owner's vehicle, or a person passing by there, too. And the fact that, you know, Mr. Colubella said that the applicant is relocating there, it seems to be on a more full-time basis, can I correct?
Yes, he's retired, and him and his wife decided to stay.
You know, he wants, he wants, he wants to make it to where, you know, that's not an issue. You know, I can, I can see where the hardship currently exists as far as that goes, and, you know, for that, I think that's something I think the board should definitely would take into consideration, too, when making this decision.
Like John said, and Ryan said, they walk that book.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm actually, when I think about this, because I wrote not only vehicular, but I wrote pedestrian traffic, too, I think it would even be harder to see a pedestrian, or a dog, or somebody walking their dog, or whatever, than it is to, you know, maybe catch a glimmer of a vehicle, because the sun hit the windshield or something, but I still think it's a dangerous situation, but doing this, he's improving that.
The hazard appears to be there, so, in my opinion, so, yeah, so. Do we have any other discussion on this application? Okay. With that, I will call for a vote on ZBA twenty-five dash six, all in favor? All opposed?
I have to oppose it, I'm sorry.
All right, so, what recommendations you want for us to come back?
My problem is, you're building like seven, you're just building too much seven hundred or twenty-five feet, if it was a lot less or smaller, I could possibly see that in the garages. The garage doesn't have to be this big. This is gonna set a bad precedent. I just, I think it's a good idea, but I just can't vote on it. It's gonna have ripple effect throughout the whole lake, and we're gonna see more and more people coming in, having bigger requests to build more, a bigger garage, add this on, and everything else like that, and it's just, if you, do you ever go down to the lake, do you ever go swimming or anything like that?
Yeah, I'm on the lake all the time.
Okay, do you see all the weeds that are in the lake now? There's tons of them, I pull them out every day. And the lake is not going to be getting any better with all this development. And there's tons of boats on the lake now, and everything else, it's sad.
It's reduced everything.
I know.
He's made it less, less-
I know Biden numbers, I know that.
Of a hazard to the water than it is now, now it's gonna remain, you know-
Well-
I understand about it, I know, it's all numbers, and I just, I just can't see the huge development, I just can't, I'm sorry.
But I think we gotta take that, we have to take that personal belief off of it, right? We have an inland wetlands department. Inland Wetlands is gonna review this, if they haven't already, right? They're the ones that are making the decisions on what the impact is on the water. So we're not looking at the style of the house, we're not looking at what its actual impact is on the lake. We're looking at the existing and the proposed, and making a decision based on the reasoning behind doing it. That's what we need to make our decision on, and then we need to rely on the wetlands group to make the decision to fix the problem that you're speaking of. So I do underst, I agree that it's-
What's the problem that I'm speaking of?
Well, the house size, right?
Yeah, that's correct.
But I don't know how the house size-
I don't know how the wetlands would have anything to do with the size of the house, I thought it was the zoning board or the planning board.
But I don't know how that affects the lake, I guess is my question.
Okay, you probably have a bigger house, and then you probably have more rain coming off the roof, and going into the lake and stuff like that, it does have an effect on it.
Well, I'm looking at the total impervious, right?
Yes, I know that.
Impervious, whether it's a roof or asphalt.
Right, and those are all numbers.
Yes.
That's all I'm saying. I can't explain it anymore.
Those numbers define, those numbers define that we would be capturing all of the water before it entered the lake.
I'm gonna ask something unprecedented, are you staying by your vote, or do you wish to change your vote?
Yes, I am, I'm staying by my vote, I'm sorry.
Okay, Mr. Colubella, I apologize, unfortunately. Roger, Jack?
That's first for me, but that's okay. I'll, we'll be back.
We'll see you then.
What would help, John?
I'm just saying that if the things are a little bit smaller, because it's really bothered me, bigger and bigger and bigger, we could maybe have it a half the size or something like that. Maybe just three hundred more square feet.
You know, I mean, I just, I mean, I'm, I don't know, I mean, I don't understand if you, if you just like the way it used to be, or the way the lake, if you don't like the fact that people are trying to come into our community, if you don't like the fact that people are, you know, building on here, I mean, I don't think people are purposely trying to, you know, make this a conglomerate big, you know, metropolis, metropolis on the lake, that these are people who want to be here. I'm just throwing that out there.
Okay, thank you. I see, it'll look differently.
Can I ask a question? I mean, you can close this, but I do have a question.
Yeah, well, yeah, since she's not concerned, we'll go ahead, the application is completed.
I think that's my question pertains to us as the board, the precedent that was in Fairfield, do we have an obligation to stand by that?
There is, what they're doing by doing that is, is saying that there is legal precedent on that there, it's basically-
I know, does that mean-
I'm understanding that as if he were to, they were use that, and they come back and they go get an attorney, the attorney's gonna come to us and say you have to approve it based on this.
That's my question, does that open us up to a liability because we didn't uphold that precedent?
Yeah, Rich.
Did you see what I'm asking?
Yes.
Does it make sense, or is that a goofy question?
No, I don't know, I don't know if there's, what that does.
We need, we need to move on.
All right. Well, maybe we can find out if he can do that some other time.
Rich, it's not, it's, we'll be back next, you know, we'll be back next month, so, we'll have to just make a couple changes, and we'll be back. All right?
Okay. Here's seven here.
So we have to sign this?
Yes. Thank you, sir. Good to meet you, too, look forward to seeing you again. Okay, moving on to ZBA twenty-five dash seven, the variance located two two four Torrenford Street, proposal, build a twenty foot by sixteen foot shed with a twenty foot by eighteen foot lean to with a front door setback of thirty-three point seven. The applicant wanna- And good evening, if you want to state your name and hap-
This is pretty unique for me, so I apologize, so if I got that, but yes, so my name is Kevin Teeling, I'm the property owner along with my wife at that, at two twenty-four Torrenford Street.
Okay, Mr. Teeling, why don't you go ahead and tell us about your project? Before, well, before, will housekeeping quickly do? All notices have been-
Yes, legal notices and adjourners' notice.
And again, Mr. Teeling, like I did with the last applicant, I'm gonna give you the opportunity, if you want to proceed with your application, you may do so with the understanding you have to have the all, all members present voting in favor. You have the option to, if you want to continue this to the next meeting, hopefully we'll have five, all five members there, you can do that, that's up to you, sir.
Still, if there was five members, and I had four votes, yay, then passes. That's the rules need for, that was clarified.
That's, that's correct.
Regardless, I'm gonna continue.
You want to proceed tonight? Fantastic, go ahead, you might go ahead, proceed.
So I have a piece of property, we live up on Torrenford Street, just consider, you know, it's right down, you go down Torrenford Street, it's on the right side, my house goes between the road and Route Eight, so that's where I kind of orient to. Steep little area, I have a current shed, it's located on the right side of the shed, it's indicated on this map, it's eight by twelve, so it's a freestanding accessory building, my goal is to increase it, and I, if I'm correct, I think a two hundred square foot building, accessory building can be put on the property, is that true?
Yeah, it can be over two hundred square feet, it just changes the permitting process.
Changes the permitting process, so, I wanted to replace the shed, so I'm gonna increase the shed, we're likely to increase the shed by sixteen by twenty in that area, and then on the, kind of the far side away from you, as you're viewing the print, is a lean to, so it's an eight by twenty foot lean to on the side, so it's open air on that side. So, I'm just removing the existing shed, and then replacing with this larger structure, a little barn, so a little post and beam thing. Just fun note, or something like that, I'm harvesting the wood off the property, and I was gonna plan on hopefully using that, too, so it's all native, so it's just kind of cool. Anyways, my hardship that I'm asking for, my variance I'm asking for, is that I have, and I should have included it, and I apologize for that, and I was, I have a topography map here, that probably would have made a lot more sense, that was drawn, I should have shared it with you, and I apologize, now I realize. But the topography of my land is quite a slope, so I do have one area where the house sits, comes down steep, levels off, and then goes back steep again. So, the area in which this, all my current structures are on, are on that piece, that piece, if I move away from it down toward my septic field, it drops off precipitously, so it makes it more difficult to even put a structure there, and the amount of fill and everything else that would go into this, so that would, that's what created my hardship. The other piece is that, on this piece, on your plan, there's a little small, little water here, and we've never gone near it or anything, it was there when the property and the walls owned it, when it was way back, I guess it was an old horse piece, but it's a little pond over there, we call it a pond, so I'm concerned about wetlands, I've never had it, you know, or any concerns when we built the house in this, so, the other hardship would be moving into that, I do not want to impact anything that's a potential water area, watershed area, if that makes sense. So that's it in a nutshell, that's all I have, and I do elevation plans of what this is, so it's not, again, it's just a shed, where I do my wood job.
If there is no objection from the board, I would, I would, I'll go ahead and, is there any, is there an objection to allowing that topography map to be included? If anyone wants to see it, as far as anything, he can just show-
No, I drove, I drove by, you can tell, you can see pretty clearly where it's-
I saw your driveway today with-
Okay, just, just in case if anyone had any questions or anything as far as the-
The only question that I have going into it is, you know, based off of the survey, you know, that pond is there, and it's, you know, using the scale, it's about eighty feet. Did Jeff review this, did he give it an agent approval, or does it?
Jeff, I mean, he reviewed it, I have both of them reviewed, but-
Because within a hundred feet, right, it should have wetlands or an agent approval on?
I don't think we spoke of that, there, you had a shed here already, correct? I'm just wondering why the front yard setback says existing one hundred and twenty-six point six, because you had something right there, it was just a little smaller, correct?
Yes, yeah, it's indicated on, it should be on that print.
I don't see, I don't see it.
Oh, boy, all right, so.
So that footage, I'm wondering if that front yard-
You can see the dotted line, but-
Yeah, this one shows this little area, my thought, the existing necessary, and then the existing sheds right here.
Does it, does anything have that, I just don't want it to turn, you know, if Jeff could have given, because it's sonitu.
Yeah, I mean, he has certainly looked at the plan.
So he would need to just give it an agent approval prior to, or-
Question for you, so, I was gonna reach out, and I, when I looked at these barns, at those, what a barnyard or whatever, they said I can have a structure this big on gravel. Is that true?
I, that I don't know, I don't know that.
According to the building codes, that's what they told me, and I could run that, so, if that was the case, and if I got past the footprint and the ability to do this here, I was gonna ask to put it on the gravel pad, eliminating the sonitu.
Yeah, that'd be a building official question, I'd have to ask.
But that's what they told me at the barnyard, that you would have one of these on patch, on gravel.
Yeah, but that'd be a building official question, I'd have to look into that.
Because the way, the way it drops off that whole, as soon as you go down to that lower area, the area, it's all wet, I mean, I have some lawn trying to grow there, and my, you know, that works out, that will.
Do we have any other questions? Was there any problems with your neighbors or anything like that that wasn't mentioned with you doing the project?
There was confusion on one side. One of my neighbors thought that I was trying to annex his property. He thought I was trying to take that away. If you, if you know historically Toingford Street, you used to have a garage right there at my property. If you driven by it, there's an old stone foundation there. And we had talked about that in the past, that that's a historical. He thought I wanted that building. So that was his confusion. We cleared that up. My other neighbor, she was concerned that the variance was on her property. And that was the discussion I had with her. I said, the variance is on my property, you know, reducing my setback, you know, where that is. And, you know, further discussion with her too, as well as just again, you know, that's really, it's a sloopy area. I don't even know how we'd ever, you know, put a house there. And, and this is my little, the little shed that's there was there twenty-seven, eight years ago and kind of built it. It needs, it's a disrepair.
So we're not increasing the front, his name, see that?
Yeah, the, the point of the old barn stays the same distance as well. That was my, so I'm not getting any farther into that current area. If that's what you're referring to.
Yeah, it's just weird to, like, like Shane pointed out, it, it says existing is one hundred and twenty-six feet, six inches, with the proposal down to sixteen foot three. So it just, but then it... The math doesn't even really work for, like, if they were using Toingford Street, the hundred and twenty feet back from the road plus adding that sixteen feet. That's what I was trying to understand what the existing versus the other one is.
Did that answer your question at all or anything or do we...
Yeah, I don't have any, I mean, I'm going to, I don't see any reason to not put it right where it is. My only concern is that somebody comes back up later on with the wetlands part of it or if something happens with that. So I would just recommend that if there's something tied to that at some point, and I was trying to understand what...
I mean, you know, you can certainly make that as a special condition, I would assume.
Jeff approves it through...
Do we have any other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none at the moment. I will go ahead and open the public, public forum comment to this meeting. Do we have any members of the public who wish to speak to this application? I'm seeing shaking heads. I'll just go ahead and ask any members of the public who wish to speak to this application? Any members of the public wish to speak to this application? Hearing none. I will, and seeing no correspondence from neighbors, I will go ahead and close the public portion, public comment portion of this application. And Mr. Teeling, I'll give you the final, final word.
Again, thank you very much for taking your time tonight to sit and listen to my, my little proposal, if you will. Like I said, the, the very, the hardship is, is just what I said, you know, it's, it's a slope and it's pretty significant. So anywhere in there just makes it, makes no, you know, I would have to build in all this fill and everything else to even make it a usable barn at this point. So I was fortunate enough, most people when they drive by, they say, oh, you live on the cliff. I didn't have their house down there. So, but we've covered out a little piece of a little property down there and made it level enough. So, but that's, you know, what I want to bring to you guys. So thank you again for your time.
Thank you, sir. Before I read the motion, did we want to add a, did we want to add a condition or some, or a special condition?
Just that Jeff either gives it an agent approval or pushes it to wetlands. For the sonotubes in the wet...
So we just read the motion and be pending agent approval? Is that, or I, I don't know how the language...
So would that be just if there were sonotubes? Is that...
Well, it's building in with, I mean, he's doing within a hundred feet.
And I don't know the, I don't know the footage, right, without the surveyor showing it.
Right.
Just my education. So is that because there are the sonotubes inside a wetland? Is that what...
Well, anything, any disturbance of the ground within the wetlands area. So even if you were to level it out, you know, if they're bringing a machine in there or something, should have something. Now, if Jeff looked at the property, if he walked out there and said, this is completely bone dry and there's not going to affect this at all until it gets to here, then I think Jeff has the right to just say, give you the stamp of approval. That's all I would ask for, just so it doesn't turn ugly at some point later on.
Yeah, I mean, you can put an inland wetland agent approval or, or determination and see if, where he wants to go with that.
So just say pending.
Pending wetland, inland, wetland agent approval?
Yeah, or inland wetland...
Inland slash agent approval.
Slash agent approval. Okay, just want to make sure the language is...
Yeah.
Any other input as far as this? Okay. Let me just write this.
Is that another gentleman to, I don't know.
That'll be Jeff.
It'll be Jeff. Same guy? Same, same building official?
No, this will be our inland wetland agent, Jeff. So I'll speak to him. He, he's actually not in the office tomorrow, so I'll speak to him on Thursday.
Okay, so the motion as now we'll read, motion grant variance per section three D five C of the zoning regulations for application ZBA twenty-five dash seven. Build a twenty-foot by sixteen-foot shed with a twenty-foot by eight-foot lean to with a front yard setback of thirty-three point seven foot pending inland wetland slash agent approval on property of two, of two-two-four Toingford Street Winchester, Connecticut. Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Ryan seconded it? Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor of this application? Opposed? Staying? Mr. Teeling, you have your project.
Thank you very much, man.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Just to protect your firm.
That makes sense. That, you know, that's part of the, the piece. We don't want to get, we don't really want to get into that one area.
So I'll speak to both Jeff and the building official when we speak to you at the end of the week.
Okay. And then that's it.
Right.
That's it. He and passes the sonotubes. I would pose that question too.
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll find all that out.
Okay.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Yep.
Let's see. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the meeting for May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. Does anybody have an opportunity, excuse me, to look them over?
Yes.
Do we have any additions, corrections?
I, I don't think I was there at the meeting, so I can't, so.
I saw one typo. There's a T missing off a word, but asked me where it was.
But in spirit, it was there. The thought was there.
We can postpone the approval of the minutes till we get some of the other people. No, but I mean, if we want to wait till we have more people who, you know...
Well, I think the majority of the people who were, who were at last month's meeting is sitting here on the board there too. And I mean, if, if...
Well, Mary Ann and Paul aren't here and John was not here.
Okay. Do you want, do you want to just postpone the approval till next meeting? See if they're here? Is there, is there any, any objection to that?
No, not, no.
Okay. With no objection, we'll go ahead and, uh, we will table the approval of the May meeting till next meeting pending more members present.
Do we have to use the four people rule for minutes or can it be a majority?
No, I think, I think for, for that it's a majority.
And three of us would constitute a majority if we all voted that way.
Okay.
I mean, well, so do you want me to put this back on the, I mean...
Well, I asked a question.
I'd just like everybody to get to look at them to see if they have any corrections that they want to make, but do you want to...
I mean, I, I mean, I'll open the question back up. I mean, do we want to, do you want to approve the minutes now or do you want to wait till we have a...
I personally think three of us, I mean, if we have three of us that vote for it, that's a majority and it would be dispensed with. I read them. I thought everything was there.
Okay.
Thoughts on that, Ryan?
Ryan, do you want to, you want to vote on it now or do you want to wait till the next meeting?
I don't see anything that stands out to me, so I'm good with...
Now? Okay, so I'll reopen the question then. Approval of the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, uh, ZBA meeting.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded.
Seconded.
Ryan seconded. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the minutes? All opposed? Any abstentions? John stinks. Okay, minutes are passed. Okay. Any new business?
No.
Come foremost?
Push that off again too.
Huh?
Push that off again also.
We might want to.
Old business, we, we need to name, I guess, a couple new officers. That's been kind of like a couple months in the, in the making here. Our vice president stepped down.
Who's that?
Ron.
Ron Do, yeah.
Ron Do. He stepped down.
Yeah, I know that, yes.
So we will need a, a new vice president for his, for his spot. I will entertain any nominations for vice president.
I, I do think we need to wait for more of the board to hear from that.
I would agree with that.
Do you want to, do you want to take...
I think we should have the five.
Okay, so we will table, consensus right now is we table the naming of new officers till the next meeting with the hope that we have more members present. As such, we'll go ahead and table the, table the, the old business till next month. Any other old business?
No.
Okay, any correspondence since this came out?
No.
Okay. Any, anything from our members tonight before we adjourn? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Ryan moved. Ellie seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adjourn? All opposed? We are adjourned.
Okay, so we should hang on to our, all of our...
Did you record it?
Huh?
Did you record in the recorder?
Yes.
The recorder, yeah.
Yes, I did.
You shut it off?
I did.
Perfect. Thank you.
I might be losing my mind with not that picture.